First briefing, we have the summer 2021 instructional technology refresh, Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. Dr. Kelstrom is joining us, and if it's all right, trustee, she'll roll through the first two items is our summer instructional technology refresh, and then move right into the project lead the way 3D printers. Ms. Dr. Kelstrom.
Good evening, trustees. Before you this evening is a three-part board memo for to purchase equipment to support the teaching and learning arm of our organization. The first purchase on the list is for a refreshment of Epson projectors. You'll notice the word laser is in front of them this time. The classroom projectors continue to be the mainstay of the classroom at this point. They help showcase the curriculum, the digital resources, and our authentic artifacts. Classroom projectors in general have a seven to eight-year life cycle, and the majority of our current projectors were purchased in 2013 and have been out of warranty since 2015 and 16. ITD keeps moving them along, but we've hit the end. We've exhausted our parts, so we are ready to do a new refreshment cycle. The device that we're putting out there now is a bulbless laser projector. We do them both in a short throw, which is mounted in front of the classroom whiteboard, or the ceiling mount. It's what the classroom already has, so it's just to take down and replace at this point. These new laser projectors would offer 20,000 hours of projection, nice vivid and colorful images. The new ones now have a built-in wireless networking capability that we can engage to manage them. And what's before you today is year one of a three-year phased-in district-wide replacement plan. And we did look for the three-year Epson refreshment cycle. We married it up to the construction bond work, so we can make sure that we were trying to duplicate in the same fashion as the bond, so we didn't cause any problems along the way. We've engaged with cooperative pricing through the ENI Cooperative Services, which is for educational institutions, and the total purchase of the first year of this purchase would be $524,500 paid through the technology bond funds. Would you like me to go on to the second purchase, or would you like to? Go ahead. The second purchase is-
Oh, I'm sorry. It's President Johnson. I was just saying my input. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I said yes to-
Continue on. The second purchase of this three-part grouping is for Apple iMac desktop. It's for refreshment at the middle school labs. If you remember about a year and a half ago, we came to do the high school labs. We run some specialized programming in our district that still requires a desktop beefier iMac setup to run our photography, yearbook, art, graphics, design programs. The current iMacs that sit there were purchased in 2013, and they have out there end of life. This purchase would be for 255 iMac desktops that we would outfit in those middle schools. We would get a four-year Apple warranty, and we would use REMC safe pricing. What's interesting about this purchase is we are getting an additional discount. Apple is changing over to a new flashier, multi-colored model, but we need that base model to do our business. So out the door, the purchase price would be $276,802.50, again, through using technology bond funds. The third purchase before you this evening for the classrooms would be a Dell laptop refreshment for the Project Lead the Way program for the high school setting. The purchases for 140 Dell Precision laptops to replace current model ones that are currently 2015, and the programming that they do is just too rigorous to maintain them on the existing laptops. The devices that we're getting will be, of course, a little beefier. We beef up the RAM. We give them a nice hard drive space, a good graphics card, and the total purchase would be made through the REMC safe program for $186,900, and also through technology bond funds. And that's the first memo that sits in front of you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know we do technology refreshes all the time, pandemic or not. If you could assign like a quantity or a dollar number to the proposals tonight that are anticipated just because of the life of technology versus needed because of the way we've used our stuff during pandemic schooling, are we experiencing higher than expected costs or lower than expected costs because of the way we delivered education this year?
We have had some higher increased costs. You know, we went to a one-to-one model, which was planned down the road, but not planned at that time. So to offset that, we did hold back on some large storage infrastructure pieces. So we always try to balance the dollars and cents that we're doing. So when we put more in the hands of the students, that we look behind the scenes, how we can, we're always looking how we can extend the life of technology. The old-world technology, it's very interesting. You always had to just buy new all of the time. This newer kind of technology that you're going to see shortly in some future purchases that are infrastructure-based, that they now use this word fabric, and so they build in, they are modularized, and so it's really an interesting time. We'll be putting some money out upfront, but I think we're going to start to see some longevity in some of the purchases. In fact, the iMac purchase, you know, somebody might say, why would we buy, you know, a series of desktops for the buildings? We get eight years versus probably four and a half for a laptop. So we're getting a two-for-one, you know, and we look at the cost benefit. So during COVID, we actually provided students some MacBook Airs if they couldn't access the Adobe Creative Cloud at home for those classrooms. So we have alternative means and can repurpose our technology pretty flexible every year. And so it's kind of like a challenge to us in ITD. How do we maximize the life of everything, and how do we give it a home? And that's a challenge we enjoy.
Well, I'm glad to hear you enjoy it, because it certainly sounds like a massive puzzle. The presentations that you're bringing tonight, are these presentations we would have seen regardless, or are these pandemic schooling purchases?
Nope. All of these are just traditional, normal yearly refreshments, and these are all the ones that are up for their next cycles. That's a great question.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
You bet.
Thank you, trustee Baskett.
Thank you, Dr. Kelstrom. Your presentation is, as always, very complete. I did have one question, and I apologize if I've missed it already. Is the thought to purchase, pending approval, to have these items available for the fall, or will they be part of the summer programming? Could you explain more, please?
You bet. So for the, like, the iMac desktops and the Dell laptops, we will work on this summer, and they will kick off our fall programming. We actually already have built the image for the iMac's images. Take a long time. That's the software and how we interface with the devices. So once we get those iMacs in, we can really start to put them in production. So the day school closes at the middle school, it's safe to say the following Monday, there'll be a team out in a truck swapping out the devices and getting them to talk to our system. The Epson projectors, we will fit them in all summer long, so we'll probably do like a week of Epson projectors in a building, then walk away, come back to another one, and we'll just continue to do those in our spare moments throughout our summer work, because we have a tight pack schedule. We have these little holes, so we'll use our team in every day to tackle these different projects. It's a pretty tight schedule.
Cool. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions? Right. Seeing none. Dr. Kelstrom.
Today joining us is Tom Pacchera. He is the coordinator of the world-renowned Project Lead the Way program that we have. I'll start it off, but then I'll turn it over to him, so he can share a little expertise with you. We have a video. If you don't want to watch it tonight, we certainly can give you the link, because we know it's, you know, been quite a night. But this is the fun project tonight to bring before you. This starts to change, a new evolution, a new level in Project Lead the Way programming that we're truly excited to share. As we all know that, you know, Ann Arbor Public Schools is a world-class leader with young five to grade 12 Project Lead the Way programming. We have many master-trained staff. We've had some wonderful granting opportunities that have allowed us to really grow our program. And, you know, being in southeast Michigan has got to help being around all of the, you know, different industries. And 3D printing is just really an integral part of the whole Project Lead the Way programming process. It takes a student from the idea that they have. It allows them to prototype it, test it out, and then turn around and get it to a finished product that really works. And so 3D, you know, we always talk about buying like the laptops and the software, but when it comes down to it, this is a really important part. Did your proof of concept work? And so before you today, we're looking to buy some industry-standard printers. We have a couple different funding sources, which is really exciting. And our goal would be to take the existing 3D printers that we have in a secondary setting and push them down to the elementary setting. So we've been using a product called Dremel, and it's worked wonderfully while we've had it. We're now ready to push those down and grow an industry standard in 3D printing. Our goal at the secondary level is to buy these business-quality printers and then also offer this concept called an additive marketing manufacturing certification program that is used by Lockheed, by GM, and by many other large organizations. And we would be the first school in the United States to get, in the K-12 setting, to get this opportunity to launch this product. So I'd really like to introduce you to Tom Pacchera, let him talk a little bit more about it, and then we'll put a close to it.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for inviting me tonight. I really appreciate it. So as you know, we were able to utilize our Dremels, over 25 of them, in the district during the pandemic last year. I was able to get them out to teachers in their homes. We produced over 2,500 face shields for our community and for communities as far away as New Hampshire. The Dremels have been a great workhorse for us. They'll continue to work fantastic, and we'd like to move them down to our, or move them over, not down, to our elementary school Project Lead the Way program, and our elementary teachers are excited about that, as you might imagine. The Dremels, again, have been great. If you may or may not know, Dremel has been purchased by the Bosch Corporation, who has been one of our bonding sources, or one of our revenue sources in the past, and they'll continue to. But we can't buy Bosch products with Bosch Foundation funds, so that's an interesting concept. We do have a video for you. Would you like us to show the video or move on for Dr. Swift?
How long is it? Tom?
About two minutes.
Oh, I want to see the video.
I would like to see the video. I think this is a really exciting program.
Okay. The video is all about the certification program currently used at MSU Denver. Again, it's Lockheed Martin and Stratasys certification program. So Andrew, if you can queue that up.
And this is the program, Tom, that our students will be participating in.
Our secondary students, yes.
Yes.
Being career-ready is really the mission overall for MSU Denver, and certainly the primary mission for the new Advanced Manufacturing Sciences Institute. Hands-on experience is vital with respect to workforce preparation.
So welcome to Introduction to Additive Manufacturing Stratasys Certification Preparation. My name is Brian Kaplan. I'll be teaching class.
The goal is to graduate students that will require very little in the way of training, and so part of that mission is to identify areas that where we can contribute, where we can appropriately prepare our graduates to seamlessly integrate into manufacturing roles.
It's just a natural pipeline. Students are going to have more opportunities while they're still in school, rather than having to graduate and then find a job. Those opportunities are awaiting them while they're still in school, still taking classes.
So we're very fortunate to have formed a trilateral partnership between Lockheed Martin Space Systems Corporation, the Stratasys Company, and MSU Denver.
The Lockheed Martin additive manufacturing lab is a really cool part of this program.
This is a Fortis 900. It's a good machine. It's an industry standard.
Lockheed Martin actually has some of the Fortis 900 3D printers that we're going to be using, and we're going to get certified with industry-wide accepted certification on that machine. So that's something that's really unique to MSU Denver, not a lot of places offer that, and that's something that employers are really looking for, too.
It helps Lockheed to have people coming into our company with a good skill set that is already well-established in additive manufacturing.
That's a build sheet. So that's what we'll actually go into the printer and get vacuumed down and print on top of it.
So the beauty of the course is that will lead to Stratasys certification, which is rapidly becoming industry-recognized. So we feel graduates of that program will not only have expertise in general terms with respect to additive manufacturing, but they'll have the Stratasys certification, which we think will give them a leg up on the competition.
The Stratasys certification program is really a door-opener for students who are trying to work in additive manufacturing.
Thanks, Andrew. So the Stratasys machines will definitely change and enhance our PLTW offerings in a way that will lead students to many different pathways. We're going to be preparing our students even better to go right to work if they choose, to go to a two-year university or a four-year university. When they use the term additive manufacturing, they're talking about 3D printer, 3D printing, excuse me. And as we mentioned earlier, these printers will be placed in our secondary building. So we're hoping to order 12 of the F-120 series. So the Fortis, the F-series or Fortis 900, they showed in the video is a giant machine. The F-120s are basically a desktop version with all the same software, all the same capabilities, but obviously fit into our physical spaces much better. These are the same machines we're using at General Motors, University of Michigan. I just found out today Notre Dame has ordered, or is ordering the exact same machines that we're about to order. So our students will be at a university level in our secondary building if this goes through. We'll be placing 12 of those F-120s in our five middle schools, two K-8 buildings, Community High School, Pathways, and Pioneer. We're also hoping to order a J-55, which is a slightly larger machine, but it uses slightly different technology in that it can print multiple colors at the same time. That will be placed at Skyline High School, and F-370, again, a slightly larger machine with multiple printheads here on high school. Our connections are growing as we speak. University of Michigan, as I mentioned, General Motors and other entities. General Motors has got an offer, if you will, on the table for our students to do some internships, but more than that, to actually pay for the student certification before they come to work at General Motors, which is really cool. Toyota has expanded their manufacturing internships from their manufacturing plant, generally speaking in the south, up to Michigan. They've joined with the Federation of Advanced Manufacturing, so we're hoping to partner with Toyota as well, and our students might get to intern at the Pittsfield Township Toyota prototyping factory or residence. Last but not least, I just really think this will enhance our Project Lead the Way program to the next level, a level above everybody else around it.
Thanks for presenting. Stay on, Tom, though, in case they have any questions. So overall, this is really quite, not only a fun project, but such a growth-based project to hit a variety of student types. This 3D printer upgrade status, this Stratasys set of printers, is worth about $450,000. Stratasys already gave us back $161, $15 discount. We are also going to use two sets of monies to help fund it. So we have a remaining balance of $131,169, $167.09 in our Bosch grant that will close it out, and then we would pair just a little bit more from the technology bond, about $134,558.91. We would get a three-year warranty on all of the equipment. We would get two-plus years' worth of materials. You heard about the cost to cover the certification exam. Kids can get up to three attempts to take that exam. And a special note on these printers, I can't remember if it was trustee Baskett or trustee Kelly. This is an example of a different kind of upgrade. So when we come to you next time, we're just going to be looking for printerheads for these chassis. So what makes this is you buy this chassis, and you put that expense in, and down the road, as the industry changes, the printerheads are interchangeable. So it's just really overall a win for the district, for our students, our community, and the partnerships we'll be able to have. And that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you so much. We just came off the heels of a great presentation on equity, so I'm going to bring some thought process on equity into this question. I love the PLTW program, and I love that we offer it to all of our elementary kids in all of the classes. In secondary, it's an elective, right? Students need to opt into that. And so I'm curious whether the technology we're considering now will be used by demographics that have the same representation as our student body as a whole, or will there be some student groups who are overrepresented or underrepresented by this purchase?
Great. Tom, take a stab at that. That's, thank you for that question, trustee.
Sure. So our sixth-grade design and modeling program will utilize the F-120 printers, the first set of printers at each of our middle schools in our K-8 programs. That program is, every student takes sixth-grade design and modeling in all of our buildings, so we will see all of our sixth graders. You're absolutely correct, trustee Kelly, in that our seventh and eighth-grade programs are elective programs as well as nine through 12. We've seen some increase in our female representation, but our program, our engineering program, is about 30% male, 30% female, 70% female. Our biomedical program at Skyline is absolutely reversed of that. It's 70/30, and that's one of the reasons the bigger machine will go to Skyline, so they can, they can build prosthetics and things of that sort in the medical detectives course. I'm sorry, medical detectives at the middle schools, but the health and medicine magnet at Skyline. We're hoping to grow that program at other high schools in the future, but that's where we're at right now.
That's great. It sounds like between the DTAP and the health and medicine, we've maybe balanced the genders. How about racial equity? Are we seeing similar demographics in those programs as we see as the student body as a whole?
I don't have real good data on that. They're very similar to the school where the programs are. I can tell you that. So at Skyline, as an example, we've got about 12% African-American to 17%, depending on the year, and we're about the same in the DTAP magnet. That's the only one I'm really, I guess, privy to. I can look into that for you and get back to you, though.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. And then this is maybe a question I need to ask offline, because neither of you may know, but my household is actually, my husband's employed by Bosch, and I'll need to look into whether I need to recuse myself from a vote that is buying a Bosch product, because I don't know if that would be considered conflict of interest. But just wanted to put that out there. I'll do my homework on that before we actually take action. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Wazerson.
Thank you, President Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Pacchera, for providing that video. I think it's very helpful to understand the scope and depth of this program that you're bringing to our district. I know that you must have been very instrumental in bringing this grant or accessing the funding. Can you give us a little bit of background on how did this happen? Did GM knock on our door and say, hey, we want to give you all this, you know, we want to get all your students in, and this is what you need to do? How did that come about?
It's a very long story.
Well, make it short. It's late.
The Bosch Community Fund became available to us at the district about four years ago, when Bosch purchased a smaller company in the Ann Arbor area, Cintas. So Bosch's Foundation is able to give monies to areas where they have employees. So based on the number of employees, gets you that number of dollars for your community. So we apply for those dollars. There's a community fund, there's also a teacher fund. Several of our teachers, 12 of them this year, applied and got the Bosch Teacher Fund grant, which is $1,000 or $2,000 if you teamed up. So we're utilizing Bosch funds in our middle schools and elementary schools for equipment, for robotics and computer science and electronics equipment. The original Bosch grant from these dollars was part of our middle school grant, a much larger grant, and it's about five years old. So we're using up the last of those monies after revamping all of our middle school labs, adding air conditioning to a couple, adding new furniture to all five of the comprehensive middle schools in both of our K-12 Project Lead the Way programs. So we've been using a Stratasys machine, the BST-768, since we opened Skyline in 2008. It's a workhorse. We added an F-123 machine about four years, and it's doing great as well. These machines are, we've upgraded them with software, but they're not upgradable with hardware, as Ms. Kelstrom or Dr. Kelstrom mentioned. So they will become obsolete eventually, but we're keeping them running. They're great learning tools for students. The biggest benefit of the Stratasys machine right now is that we can operate it from anywhere. I can take a look at my phone right now, log into the Stratasys machine at Skyline, and set it to print a print job. I only need to go in then to pick it up when it's completed. I can watch it via video. There's cameras in these machines. I could send that video to my students, et cetera. So I was very attracted to the Stratasys machines, because they've been so great for us, and contacted Stratasys, and they did a lot of the work for us. And we're getting a fantastic price from them, because we are the first school district utilizing this program. They've thrown in a lot of things for us that I think they are throwing in because we're going to be a beta test for this program, for the certification, but also for these machines in the use in the secondary labs versus university level. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah. So can you give the board an idea of what does it mean to have a certification? I know that it was discussed that once you have the certification, you can actually get a job straight out of high school, possibly, if you have that certification. What does that mean in terms of the level of pay scale? Do you have an idea?
I don't at this time. I can look into that again for you and get back to you in a week or so. It means two, it means two things for our students. Right now, a few universities, like MSU Denver, are offering this certification, so they're offering it for college credit. So it may mean in the future that our students can go into universities that are offering the certification with those credits already. That would be something I would definitely work on. It definitely means that they can go to work for companies that have the Stratasys machines already in place. They may not go to work as an engineer, obviously, or as a designer. They may go into work as a Stratasys technician. They're already certified, so they can work on the machine without a Stratasys rep having to come in and work on a machine, warranty issues, things of that sort. Again, I can look into the details of that for you, but it means a job immediately. Yeah.
That would be nice to know. And my last question is kind of along the equity question. Can you tell us, are all the high schools, I know you're moving, you're moving over the current machines to other schools, but are all high schools, all five, we have five high schools, are all five high schools getting a 3D printer? Is that the plan?
Yes.
And have access to the certification training also, or do they have to go to a certain school in order to do that?
Great question. All five high schools are getting one of the Stratasys machines based on space. We'll keep some of the Dremels in place. We'll keep Stratasys in place, the current Stratasys at Pioneer, the current Stratasys at Pathways, and at Skyline will stay there. But every school will have a Stratasys machine that is equipped for the students to work on the certification on. And all of our high school staff, all of our middle school staff, will be able to go through the certification process themselves. It's a train-the-trainer certification, so they'll be able to train their students. We'll only offer that certification at the high schools, but our middle school teachers will have the training, just in case. We'll only offer that certification at the high schools, but our middle school teachers will have the training just in case.
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate all the hard work you and Dr. Kelstrom has done to get this to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gainer.
Thank you. Yeah, this is very cool, cutting edge technology, if I can use that term here. I'm, I'm thinking back to my high school. I went to an excellent high school. I took 11 semesters of science in three years. We used the same organic chemistry textbook they used at University of Michigan, but we were very aware we didn't have the same equipment that the universities had. And so, you know, my question is, is this appropriate for high school? This was a video from a university. Let me add my other comment to it. I just want to make sure we're being proactive with our curriculum. We obviously want to be not only college-ready, but career-ready. So this does it, but I'm also very aware that we may be doing the bidding of these corporations. So can you, can you talk to the appropriateness for high school? Is it just that we have the money, so we're spending it? And, you know, the, you know, the, the curriculum basically coming from our own needs, rather than just, just doing what corporations, you know, are, you know, the grants are great. Obviously, it sounds like a good deal. They have reasons to try to start feeding these into high schools. So all of those dynamics in place. And let me just add my last comment a little bit to the side. It's, it's just so great that the community supports us, supports us with these technology bonds, and we can afford to do this. I just thinking that, wondering if there are ways we can return that with, you know, appreciation by funding the needs of the community. Anyway, let me go back to my question about, you know, curriculum and where does this stem from? Is it appropriate for high school? And how does the, well, you don't have to answer the big question of how all the corporations feed into it, but.
I'll try to. So we're definitely creating a pipeline for the corporations. We're creating a pipeline for the universities as well in their technique. Universities are currently using the machines. University of Michigan has several of the Stratasis machines in their, in their labs. So one of the things for me, and then I'll comment on the curriculum part, is this isn't, this is a real equity piece. When, I'm, I'm going to use a young female goes to the University of Michigan. One of, one of my teachers made this comment today. She got into her first lab and realized she felt like she didn't belong there because she didn't know what some of the machines were. She didn't know how to use some of the machines. She quickly changed her major to physics and then went into education. Fortunately for us, she's one of our amazing PLTW teachers now. But she was, she didn't feel ready to work in a lab space like that. So I'm, I'm really hoping that having the latest technology, having these industry-standard machines will encourage our underrepresented minorities and females to, to go into more of the STEM fields and feel like they belong because they know the equipment. As far as curriculum goes, that first machine that I mentioned, that Stratasis BST-768, was purchased through Project Lead the Way at the time with their national grant. It's, it's very much part of the Project Lead the Way curriculum. They let you choose. I shouldn't say choose. It's considered optional equipment. So whichever 3D printer you can afford to purchase, or you'd like to purchase, you purchase for the program. So we're, we're just upping the game a bit here, but it very much fits our current curriculum, especially the curriculum we wrote or rewrote through COVID to deliver online. If for some reason we had to switch back to online, we are hoping to offer a Project Lead the Way class or two through A2 Virtual in the upcoming years. Very easy for students to log in and print their product. Then the teacher or someone in the building could put it out at the curb, put it in the mail, get it out to that student accordingly. So I feel like it's a perfect fit for the curriculum. And then the community engagement part, you know, I, I think the best, best story is that story of the face shield. We really, I, I really think we served the community well. I didn't mention, after I let Bosch and Stratasis know that we were 3D printing face shields, they sent us material boxes of material, hundreds of dollars worth of material for us to continue to print at no cost to the district.
All right. Well, thank you, trustees. Any other questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Kelstrom. Thank you, Mr. Pachira. Really appreciate that. Very exciting.
Thank you.